Welcome, this is the Jordan School District Board of Education meeting. Today is Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. And this is our study session meeting. We are in the J A T C South Building. And we have six board members present. And Ms. Dean is on her way. Our first agenda item is a review of our calendar survey for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So we'll turn the time over to Dr. Anderson and Mr. Caleb Olson.
All right, thank you, members of the board. As you remember, we surveyed for about two weeks earlier in April, the members of our district community on their preferences on the calendar survey. And we have those options here for you tonight. There were a few extra questions that the board asked to have included. One to secondary parents about parent teacher conference in the spring. And one to employees, licensed employees and administrators about grade transmittal days. The results of those two questions are not in my presentation tonight in the interest of your time. The results, however, are in board docs that you can review and decide at another time if there are further actions needed. We had seven thousand ninety-three responses to the survey. The breakdown is about the same as it has been for the past few years. We almost don't have to adjust the sizes of the bars because our percentages are just about the same every time we go through the calendar survey. Same here, breakdown is always elementary heavy, then middle school, high school, and other categories. We, as you will recall, surveyed on three options. One that started early in August, one that started in the middle of August, and one that started late in August. The responses are there on the screen. The middle August start was the overall favorite with forty-eight percent of respondents selecting that as their preference. The late August start was the overall least favorite, last place choice. There were a few groups who called out the early August start as a preference. I would just point out to the members of the board that three groups who marked that as their preference, students, administrators, and other, are the smallest groups of the survey with about a hundred and twenty people each. So you kind of have to put that into perspective as we go through. So in light of that, the recommendation that we would make to the board would be to approve the middle August start option for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Now, before we get too far down that road, I do want to just point out one change that we will be making to this option. It's more of an administrative change, so I don't know that you need to call it out in your motion. But in November, there is a day set aside for the pre-ACT and high school college prep day at the high school level. I put that date on, and it's always the second Tuesday of November. But it was pointed out after the survey went out that that second Tuesday of November in fall twenty-twenty-five is Veterans Day. So we will be moving that scheduled day just one day back to avoid any conflict with planned activities or events at our, at our high schools. So we will make that change. That day and the day in March for the high school have kind of floated anyway, and we have made adjustments to those as needed when schedule has changed. But just for your information, the recommendation will be for that middle August option with the one-day change in the high school in November to avoid conflicts with Veterans Day.
Okay, we'd also like to welcome Ms. Dean is with us now. Does anyone have any questions? This is on our agenda to vote on in our general meeting today.
And I'm assuming everyone's okay with the middle option. I'm curious if we have any logic behind the groups that were pretty strongly early. Was there any information there? In comments or anything like that?
The other group is, well, let me start over. We didn't ask for written comments this time because we added in some other questions and was trying to keep the survey relatively concise. The other group is a bit of an outlier because I don't ever know who is in that group. It's just one that we put in to identify people in the community who may want to give input. The admin group, it's basically tied with the middle August option. My gut would be that our administrators are already working at the beginning of August, so starting the school year earlier isn't much of a shift for them. The handful of students who responded and preferred that, I would assume it's a similar vein. Because we don't send the survey link out to students directly, it would be secondary students, for the most part, who are responding. And a lot of those students are already involved in school-related activities in August. So there's some reason there that it may make sense to just start back.
Okay, thank you.
Would an earlier August start time affect our sports programs? I know a lot of our football camps and stuff are double sessions and impact would an earlier start time be to that?
It would push a lot of those activities into July. And there are some, and I'm speaking outside my area of expertise, but I know there are some moratorium dates in, in the summer that would be a conflict, so. Yeah, there, there are some advantages to an early start, but it would ripple through a lot of other things that would have to be adjusted and rescheduled.
Is there eclipse on this calendar? I just had to break the seriousness of it off.
There's an eclipse in Iceland in two years, and excursions are currently being sold, so you and I should talk.
Let's, let's, I think that would be correct.
And if you're still around in twenty forty-five, we'll, we'll talk then.
I won't be on the board for sure, but I hope to be around. No, I think this is a good calendar.
I really like that end of quarters are like right before fall break and spring break. Just seems to line up well.
The extra week after Memorial Day will be difficult, but.
Yeah, because it's, it's two weeks, graduation's two weeks after, yeah.
Okay, so everyone's okay to vote on this then in our meeting? Okay, great, thank you. And please tell the calendar committee thank you also, appreciate their work.
Do that, thank you.
Our next agenda item is a discussion on administrative policy DP three seventy-four, employment background checks. And we have discussed this policy a little while back, and we'd like to welcome Mr. Brent Burge here.
Thank you very much. At first, I need to excuse Dr. LaMester, she had a prior engagement that precluded her from being here. So as you mentioned, we provided some changes in a previous meeting. Since that time, I think some additional changes were made, I believe, from Mr. Van Coleman. I don't know if you'd like to discuss any of those at all?
President, can I move that we table this? Mr. Van Coleman and I have had numerous conversations about this, trying to get this in line with state rule. And there's just some things I'm still very uncomfortable, and I think we can present a better policy in line with state rule, kind of following that same idea if we just had a little bit more time. We couldn't coordinate like we had wanted to this week and last week. And so if I could just have a little bit more time, I'd like to take some more time.
And is there, is there any reason this needs to be done sooner rather than later?
No.
I don't think so. You, everyone okay with that?
Sure. Take official.
Do you want to make the motion?
I move that we table item B, the discussion on administrative policy DP three seven four.
I'll say.
Okay, motion by Mr. Dunford, second by Ms. Richards to table agenda item B, discussion on administrative policy DP three seventy-four. Is there any discussion to that?
We appreciate all that was done. I'm just trying to make a few things in harmony with state rule, and so Paul and I will work together to get that back to the board.
Okay, and I assume you'll work with human resources also.
And you'll let us know when you're ready?
Yep.
Hey, all in favor of that motion to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you for being here today, and we look forward to having you back again.
Thought you'd be here all night, huh?
Our next agenda item is a report on enrollment trends for multi-language learners. There's been a lot of, lot of interest in the community about what is happening in our schools and a lot of misinformation out there also. So we are glad to have Mr. Jamanson and Ms. Anderson here with us today from our Evaluation, Research, and Accountability Department to provide some data and some information to us.
Thank you for having us. It's a pleasure to be with you again this evening. I'm going to introduce Brooke Anderson, who is our data scientist, which is a new position that this board approved. And you're going to be able to see a data scientist in action now. Turn the time over to Ms. Anderson, thank you.
There we go. Thank you, I'm so glad to be here. Very exciting to get asked questions about our student enrollment. So I've prepared some numbers and some trends over time about our multi-language learners, specifically about students who are learning English. So everyone that we are talking about today is a student whose native language or language spoken at home is other than English, and they haven't yet tested as fluent in English on the WEDA access test, which is how we test students' English language proficiency or fluency. So that's who we're talking about, is students who have been qualified for English learner services and haven't yet tested as fluent or proficient in English.
Question on that one. Are there native English speakers who don't pass that WEDA test?
Would not administer it to native English speakers because the first qualification for taking the screener test is that you are speaking a language other than English in your home.
Okay.
So we have had some mix-ups in the past where parents said, yes, we speak this language in our home, and they said, oh, never mind, actually, we don't. We just thought it'd be funny to put that. So our English learner enrollment trends obviously have been trending upward over time, over the last ten years. We're currently at about eight point eight, eight point five percent in our district of our students are English learners, meaning they are currently qualified for those English learner services. That's actually right up matching with the state at this point. We used to be significantly lower than the state as a whole in terms of our enrollment of English learners, but now we're right on the average. Any questions about that before we proceed?
What is the, the Y-axis measuring there?
I abbreviated this. This is the percent of all of our students who are English learners, so the percent of students who are English learners. Statewide, it's eight point eight right now. And then in Jordan, it's eight point five. So I abbreviated the Y-axis to stop at ten, so you didn't see like lines just at the bottom. All right, so here's a little bit of a more interesting view broken out by the feeder systems in our district. And I understand that we have added new feeder systems in the last few years. I just applied that same, you know, feeder system back to twenty fourteen, even though Mountain Ridge High didn't exist then. So for all the students who are coming in through those schools that fed to Mountain Ridge High, this is how many were English learners back ten years ago. And you can see, if we're looking at Mountain Ridge and Harriman specifically, those bright red and purple areas, it's pretty small. You know, most of our English learners ten years ago were really just in two feeder systems, mostly West Jordan, about half of them in West Jordan. And then now we fast forward ten years to this current school year. And as of October one, we can see we've still got quite a few English learners in the West Jordan feeder, which is this blue area, and quite a few in the Copper Hills feeder, which is the kind of aqua area. But we have, you know, Harriman and Mountain Ridge taken up a lot more space as well. There's a lot of English learners who have been added to that part of our school district.
But, but Harriman and Mountain Ridge have always been higher than other schools in our district outside of the West Jordan area?
No, the highest enrollment of English learners has always been in West Jordan and Copper Hills.
But outside of those two, then it's Harriman and?
Well, back in twenty fourteen, I would say that Bingham actually had more students who were English learners than did either Harriman or Mountain Ridge. But these are good questions, and I know it sometimes takes a while for your eyes to adjust to a chart like this and to figure out how to read it. But we're just seeing a larger population over time, and we're seeing specifically a larger population in those two feeder systems over time. This is the same view broken out by percent. So if you put all of our English learners in the same graph like we have here, how, what percent of them are in each feeder? So this is just illustrating, most of our English learners used to be in the West Jordan and Copper Hills feeder, small percent in Harriman and Mountain Ridge. And now the percent that are coming from Mountain Ridge and Harriman is much larger. Interestingly, you'll notice there's some very faint green and kind of pinkish lines at the bottom. That's Bingham and Riverton. The percent of our English learners who are coming from those feeder systems hasn't changed much over time. They've, it's increased along with just general enrollment. But it's still making up a pretty stable portion of their student body, hasn't increased that much.
And even though Harriman and Mountain Ridge have increased, that's still a fraction of what West Jordan and Copper Hills have.
A bit more even distribution as of this school year in where our English learners are in our district. Not an entirely even distribution by any means, but it is spread out more.
Is this current to this year?
This is, this chart ends in. This is, this chart ends in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, which is this school year, and it's current as of October first.
October first.
I took the students who were enrolled as of October first each school year to, to map out the trend.
We also have information on the numbers from this year. Brooke has also pulled that.
Well, as of today, I have numbers for that as well, yeah.
So we have numbers as of today, but when you're comparing year to year, we use October first always?
Reason for that really is because we've reported enrollment to the state on October first as well, that's kind of the unofficial reporting period that's existed for some time.
So in your board docs, you'll have a, a document, a PDF, that shows you the breakdown of the enrollment percents and counts by feeder system and by school, it looks like this. And so hopefully, we can just spend some time flipping through that, making sure that you're familiar with it, and asking any questions about the different feeder systems. One thing that you'll notice is that, as especially you get down to the elementary level, the trends look very, very different, depending on which elementary school you're looking at. Some elementary schools have seen a large increase, which is that orange area, you'll see that orange area getting larger over time. And that means there's been an increase in the number of English learners, and for some elementary schools, you'll see that orange area, that percent of English learners, staying the same over time, it hasn't really increased for them.
Brooke, I'm looking at Jordan Ridge. What would, what would cause the downward trend, you know, toward the end there? What would, what would cause that, do you think? That seems like.
When did Alps move? Cuz Alps was.
Before this school year.
Way before this, yeah.
Isn't, it would be interesting to look, to see which schools actually saw a decrease, because that.
Yeah.
And whenever I'm working with schools specifically on data, looking for things that are consistent and inconsistent are always.
Just one more thing, I think the N-count there is, it's, we're talking a few students.
Right.
We're talking like going from eighteen to thirteen students over the course of a couple of years.
But it's still the only one doing that, and that's, I'm wondering, I just wondered what.
That could be one family moving, right?
Where, where the N-size is small, the percentage can swing more easily.
And for Bingham, which is the first slide that we're looking at, the N-size is very small, they just don't have many English learners in their feeder system at all. The highest percent of English learners are English learners at Alk Meadows, and that's five point seven percent, which is not that high for the whole district, considering.
Well, and looking at this stuff, it's, ends up only being thirteen students this year, like.
So, sorry, you were saying, I mean, is, I just wanna make sure I'm reading the, the data correctly. So you, Aspen is fourteen point nine seven percent? Oh, you meant on that page? I was like, okay, I'm reading something wrong.
There's not that many stories to tell there, so let's move on.
Sorry.
To have more stories to tell.
It's a good story, it's a good story.
I'm just looking for my schools, let's be honest.
So I've moved on to Slide eight to look at the. Harriman has, is one of our feeders that has seen a significant increase in the enrollment of English learners over time. And you'll notice, it's not evenly distributed at all. I mean, look at Eastlake Elementary with only, you know, three percent of their students being English learners versus Aspen Elementary, you know, the newest one, which is about fifteen percent of the students being English learners. So one and. English learner at Aspen Elementary. Other takeaway by looking at these trends is that the, the increase in English learner enrollment is highly localized. Oh, sorry about that. I could've used my teacher voice and really just blown your ears out. Okay. We go back to the slide that we skipped.
Yes, you do.
Upper Hills. You can see that for Copper Hills, most of their schools, their elementary schools tend to have a larger enrollment of English learners, and always have. But a couple of them have really seen an increase, like Hayden Peak. Just gonna pause here as you guys look at your schools.
This is the one that I was, had a question on. That Ridge View right there?
Yes, Ridge View.
I'm thinking it may be because of the type of housing there?
I think that's a really good guess. Especially our newer schools, you'll notice, Aspen, Ridge View, they are increasing in the English learner enrollment quite a bit, because that is the new housing that's available.
Well, based upon specifically the Harriman feeder system, I have heard and read articles that were like thirty-five percent non-English speaking. That's grossly over.
Yes.
I asked our data magician to look at the, at the minority, the, the percentage of minority students, and I think that's where the confusion has come in.
They're getting a non-Caucasian number and just translating that.
Right.
As non-English speaker, but a non-Caucasian person could be someone born and raised in Utah, born and raised in Harriman, and still be a non-Caucasian.
Right, so that would be assuming that all of your Pacific Islander students don't speak English, it would assume that all of your Native American students don't speak English, and of course, that's not the case.
We have those numbers that we can, that, that we'll go over as well, but that's, we, we tried to look for the source of that confusion. Where is this thought that a third of the students at Harriman High do not speak English?
That's the connection, it makes sense.
And the, and the other, the other concern is that it's a, it's a binary notion, you either speak English or you don't. It's a, it's a continuum of English skills that we measure carefully to be sure we're providing proper support to help move students along. So that, that's another bit of information that helps someone looking at a school understand exactly what's happening, and helps us bring the proper.
And we give them the WIDA test, but isn't there several levels of WIDA? I've never taken the WIDA test, but, and so are they still considered a non-English speaker until they pass the highest level of WIDA, or?
No. If you don't mind, we can go on and talk about that, okay?
Sorry if I'm out of order.
You're good.
It's, what you pointed out is important, because there are some misunderstandings about various schools and the percentages and what they mean, and, and the various categories and what they mean, so.
So the WIDA test, or WIDA access test, is actually testing students more than just their speaking skills. You have to be fluent or proficient in speaking, reading, writing, and listening, and it's in academic English. So not just conversational English, you have to be able to read your biology textbook in order to test as proficient on the WIDA and exit English learner services. So where the fluency standard is now, and this has changed over time as we've learned more about how English learners progress through their language proficiency development, is that you have to have a speaking score of level three point five or higher, and a level two point fire, two point, four point two level or higher overall, that's a composite of all four areas. And I know those numbers don't mean anything to you yet, but.
So it, it's composite four point two and not four point two in each of the areas?
Composite four point two, and at least three point five in speaking.
Okay, so somebody could get really high in writing and really low in listening and still be.
Correct.
fluent in.
It's uncommon, what we see mostly is that students are much more fluent in speaking than they are in writing. Actually, it's, writing is the hardest for students to pass off. And so we have six levels of fluency that we define for WIDA English language development, one, two, three, four, five, six, and then when we're talking about students who would have low speaking fluency, students who would benefit from translating, you know, pretty much everything, like translating their end-of-year tests, translating a lot of their instruction, we're really talking about students who are on the, you know, the one and two level of fluency. They're just entering, or they are just emerging as English speakers. Students who are, you know, developing, expanding, they're speaking English. They're not speaking it perfectly, but they are communicating in English. And WIDA actually does a really great job of defining these using what they call can-do descriptors. Here is what you as a teacher or a school administrator can expect students to do when they are at this level, here's what you can ask them to do, you can ask them compare and contrast and things like that.
So in our previous charts, when we were looking at the percent, those were everyone that hasn't reached the three point five and four point two on the WIDA?
Exactly.
Okay, so it doesn't mean they can't speak any English, it just means they're not proficient.
Right.
So do we have a number of, of students that score the very lowest and they can't speak at all?
We do. You're so good in predicting what we're about to do.
That's why I called her a data magician, and she's a scientist, I don't wanna diminish that, but it does feel like magic.
Jumped into all of our questions, that's good.
So in those can-do descriptors, when we're talking about students on the low end of speaking proficiency on WIDA, level one entering is defined as just being able to answer yes or no questions within your lesson, and then providing information about yourself, like what's your name, where are you from? And naming everyday objects, so this is really the, the point at which students, you know, you might have index cards around your room saying like, this is the pencil sharpener, this is the, and like helping them learn the names of everything in the room. And then a level two, this is where you can do basic, you know, five Ws kind of communication. What happened, where, when? You can clarify, you can ask clarifying questions. And then you can, you know, use illustrations and characterizations to kind of help clarify your own meaning when you communicate. So for everything that I'm presenting to you today, I've classified our students with low speaking fluency, the students who might say like, oh, this, this kid can't speak English, as students who are at these levels. So we're gonna return to our nice area chart where we look at what has been the increase in students with low speaking fluency over time. And we can see it corresponds with the level, with the enrollment of English learners overall. Meaning that if you have an increase in the enrollment of English learners, you're gonna have an increase in the enrollment of English learners who are on that low fluency end. And we still see most of our low fluency English learners in West Jordan and Copper Hills, and an increasing number in Harriman and Mountain Ridge. And it's quite an increase for Harriman and Mountain Ridge, if we look back in twenty seventeen, Harriman, the feeder system as a whole, only had eleven students in the entire feeder system who would have qualified as a low speaking fluency English learner. And now, this year, they have three hundred and twenty-four. So that's a lot more kids who would struggle to communicate with their teacher in English.
It is interesting, West Jordan and Copper Hills still have the larger groups, but the spread, I mean, it's much more of a spread between even really all of the feeder systems.
Well, when you look at enrollment numbers, those have also increased quite a bit in Harriman and Mountain, right?
Right.
Is that part of this correspondence we're seeing, or correlation we're seeing?
It is, so when we look at low English fluency as a percent, you know, I don't think I, I don't think I prepared that as a percent, I'm sorry.
I think it's on one of the other documents you attached, though.
Probably is. Let's see. There we go, so you have this PDF. Which tells you as of basically today, what percent of students are on the low end of English fluency, but this is percent of English learners. Let's see. But you're right, it would increase proportionally with their overall enrollment as well.
Really mind-boggling is how steady Bingham and Riverton have stayed. I mean, that's, that's the real mystery to me.
My guess would be if you looked at housing, though, the turnover in those two communities is not really high.
And they've had a declining enrollment, right? And, and so I guess if they had an increasing number of multi-language learners, then they're following the trends, yeah?
This may be a silly question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. You know, I'm looking at this pretty colored chart, and I see in seven years, the great increase from the beginning to end. Is there any possibility that the emphasis on WIDA has entered in? Do you know what I'm saying? Could that have made a difference? Because we're more aware, perhaps, more diligent about testing our kids?
That is a possibility, I don't think it would account for a majority by any means, but it, we have been constantly improving our identification processes and our testing and screening processes, so yes, there are more students who are, you know, being screened and identified, I think, than there would have been in the past, but I think it is, I think that would be a small increase overall that is solely due to better identification processes.
So a family moves in. We test them at some point and figure out they're gonna be part, they're gonna be one of the statistics on these charts. How long before they're removed from these statistics? How long does it take?
For the typical student, and by the way, when a student enrolls, they, part of their registration is to complete a home language surveys, they tell us what language is speaking at home, and that's what we base off of, you know, does this student need to be screened for English learner services? And we actually only have ten days to get that screening done, so it's a quick turnaround. At the beginning of the year, we have thirty days, and that's where most of the students are enrolling. But the rest of the year, we have ten days to get everyone screened and determine if they need services. And then as far as how long it takes them to exit services, to reach that level of proficiency, it depends on how young they are, and it depends on how fluent they were when they enrolled. So as a state, we actually set targets for students who are receiving English learner services to say, here is your target proficiency level the next time that you test on the WIDA test, we wanna see you grow by this much. And the targets depend on the grade level when they enrolled, and their level of proficiency at enrollment, so we are expecting that students who are in high school are gonna take longer to develop fluency than a student who enrolls in kindergarten.
Average, is it a year, is it three years, is it?
I'm gonna defer to Michelle for that. Off the top of your head?
It, it depends, it takes three to five years for language acquisition, so it just depends on the student and whether they've had English background before. So they're, what you're seeing too, is students come with, we call them either VIX or CALPS. So what you're seeing too is students come with, we call them either VICs or CALPS, basic interpersonal communication skills, which would be the level 1s and the level 2s, and the CALPS is what they want to achieve, which is the cognitive academic language proficiency. And it just depends on the student and the support, level of support by teachers, instructors, and families.
Three to five years?
Three to five years.
So targets that Brooke mentioned, we'll take it even to six, but yes, three to five years and even to six years.
So if we go back five years here, 2019, we're pretty confident all of those students are not being represented on this chart anymore.
I would not say that all of them aren't, because there's going to be a lot of variation within the population. There are students who will continue to receive English learner services for seven, eight more years than that. That is a statistic that we track in our Language and Culture Services Department, as well as our department. How many students are taking longer than we would expect to achieve fluency? And what do we need to do about that?
Imagine at some point, things like disabilities would play into this as well.
Yes.
There is definitely disproportionate number of kids that speak a language and are attending, like Kari Sue. And I understand that we want to make sure we're not over-classifying based on the language, but that's got to wash out somewhere.
Some students, especially those that are newcomers to the country, where their first enrollment come from a variety of educational backgrounds. There are some that have come from, you know, schooling, and there are some who come from war-torn countries that have not been in school, or this is the first time they've seen a computer-based test. And so there's a lot to support beyond just, you know, your academic language acquisition as well.
How do our trends compare to other places in the state, and more importantly, like the rest of the nation? That's number, question number one. Number two, I don't know if you can answer this, but if you had a crystal ball, is there any predictors that this is a temporary impact and then it'll go back? Or is this going to be a long-term trend continuing to trend upward?
One of the things that we're going to look at in the next little few slides is the number of students who are refugees. And that's a population I wanted to call specifically, because refugee students specifically have exponentially increased in their enrollment in our district. And that is a trend that will continue for at least the next year that we can see, because that is a global trend. It is also a United States nationwide trend.
And are these all Spanish-speaking, or, because recently I saw a lot of reports about Chinese people coming through the borders?
Well, Chinese refugees or asylum seekers, we don't see many from China, I think they're displaced elsewhere. Most of our refugees are from Venezuela. We do have a few from Ukraine, from Russia, and from Afghanistan. But about 70% of our refugees will be from Venezuela. So I think, I don't think that refugees are evenly distributed based on their country of origin. I think that we just wind up with a larger population of refugees from Venezuela.
And then maybe you can answer this, maybe not, but are these ones coming from Venezuela? I often hear that they're illegal, but then I hear that they're come as a political, what's the word, asylum? Do we know, like, and can we even ask?
Refugee status is permanent illegal status.